Okay, good evening. I'm calling to order the council work session and I will turn it over to our distinguished council president for the first item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the first item in the discussion on the town fee schedule?
No, first you have to put an agenda.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Apparently, we have to approve the agenda first. So any kind of a motion for approving the agenda for the work session?
Go move.
Go second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I read.
Both.
In fact, that is the fee schedule which is shown on two sheets provided by EJ. And I think the changes that you're proposing are in red. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. But just to review. You look through the new homes down 5,000 and then there is there's a paid rating going up schedules for accessory buildings from 200 to 800 with square footage. Now have a higher charge for generators at $100 as opposed to an age factor 75 because they are noisier is what we said. The variance fee is now 1,000 on that first sheet. And on the second sheet, that rental fee is reduced to 350. Early bird swim is going up to 115. And water aerobics is free for residents. Well, maybe you think you want some discussion.
I did want some discussion. I know we've moved to make it free for our residents and then our guests have to pay just a guest fee. And I think they need to pay a fee for the program. Otherwise, I think what we're doing is we are encouraging people to come and be guests and to come to water aerobics very cheaply compared to going anywhere else. They've always paid a fee before and I don't think it should be on our residents to pay for guests. I did a count and there were 40 guests last summer. Over the course of the summer, I went off the sheets. Linda gave me last year, take a look at the whole program. And if we charged, I know we were considering a charge of $8 to for our for our residents, we see next act, and I think it still has to go for the water aerobics as well. Because the other thing I've seen, I thought, I saw somebody that says we're going to limit the number of people that can that can come to a water aerobics class. So that might push out, if more guests come, push out some of our residents. If we don't limit the number of people doing water aerobics, we're going to push out our town residents from swimming, doing laps. Because water aerobics has seems to have graduated into more than the original three lanes that we first gave them. Then we went to four lanes and five lanes because of COVID. And so it's been hard to dial that back. But I think we have to dial that back. Otherwise, people can't swim laps. And I think we have to accommodate everybody the best we can. So that's why I think.
One, one thing, one piece of information you might want to have is the, the process for signing up that, that EJ developed. Because how, how do, how does that, how to guess factor in there? So why don't you talk about how, how you set it up?
So, starting this postseason, you can sign up in advance on Member Splash for water aerobics. And when you sign up, you can check a box to say you are bringing a guest in.
And are we limiting the number of people that can be in a water aerobic session?
Twenty-two people can sign up because that was the max given to us by the instructor.
Okay, 22. None, you know.
And I'll just comment too. They can, each week, they can sign up only one weekend.
Right.
So, you know, that's a really good question because I think that really priorities should be given to guests.
You don't mean.
To, to residents. So, so I think that maybe you might want to look at the what I would suggest to everybody is rather than spending a lot of time on this, let's see how the way he set up works and then see if it becomes a problem and it can be revisited. But I, but I do think that it's a very good point that there should be, that first priority should be given to the citizens. And then if there's space available, they can bring a guest, but not from the beginning, they can bring a guest. See what I'm saying? Does that make sense to you?
It does, but I don't know how it's going to be regulated because I'm going to go down to water aerobics next, let's say on Wednesday. And I want to bring my friends. So I go in, I sign up. So do I find out my friend can't come when I get down?
Well, let's, let's leave that up to, because he figured out this really, which I think is going to work system. So, so let's see how that works and, 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 and he'll keep that in mind.
So we just apply what is, what is the system? I have two questions. First is if people haven't signed up, are they being rejected at the front desk? Is the instructor? Because I don't, I mean.
They won't be rejected, but unless it, there's room.
Okay, so there's, if, if there is, if 20, there are 22 people there, then anybody who shows up, a walk-in will not be accepted.
But if only like 10 people sign up.
So, then, then, does the system currently count the guests towards the 22?
Yes.
That is the problem, right?
It is a problem. Well, let's, why don't we just have a two-week?
Let us try and see.
Yeah.
And let's see, let's revisit.
And I think the two of you that are most interested work with EJ because I don't, you know, let's see how it works. Let's see how it works.
Just suggestion, EJ, that you explain the system to residents so that they don't just wander in thinking they can get in when 22 people have signed up.
Well, he's put a lot of stuff out about.
Yeah, I did read it, you know, quickly, but I wasn't sure how it was going.
I, I think one thing would be good if, does it start this week?
It started today.
It started today. So how did it go?
I didn't go, but I respect.
Of course, my wife, it went well, except two coaches showed up today.
Okay, so what I would suggest is the next week that EJ go down and explain to the reg here is how this is working.
I think you should.
No.
No, just, you should talk it out with me.
Scream it down, stuff.
EJ, I'll go down with you.
No, he doesn't have time to do that. But anyway, I'm glad you're all monitoring this, but I really am convinced that EJ is going to make it work.
I don't doubt that it will work. My question really is, is should?
But that's a good point. Yes.
Should our guests be paying for the instructor or not? I, I think we need to strongly consider that because otherwise we're asking our residents to pay.
Well, then you're, so what are you suggesting the guest fee be?
Well, the guest fee is $5 to come to the pool.
No, no, but what are you suggesting the, the fee for aerobics for guests should be?
I guess I'd go back to the eight bucks that it was, or maybe we just make it easier. $10 if you're bringing the guest and five goes technically for the, I'm just pulling this out of the air, by the way. And five goes to our guest fee and five goes towards the paying to the instructor.
So, so remember tonight, what you're doing is reviewing the fee schedule and then it will be publicized and it will be voted on at the June meeting.
Okay.
So if, if you're amending this list here and if the majority of you go along with it, then that's what will be put in as the, as the under consideration.
A formal amendment?
Well, maybe. I'd like some other feedback. What do you guys think about, one, charging for a guest? Two, a price. I just pulled $10 out of the air. Last year it was, it was $9 and five if you were a guest. Okay, I'd say we'll bring it back down to eight because that's what it used to be. I don't know. I'm just, I'm just swimming here. Anybody have an opinion besides me? Otherwise, I can make this up myself here alone. Given the opportunity.
I mean, the, the question in my mind is if it is, let us say right now, $5 guest fee and then we say you pay $8 instead of five, the extra $3 doesn't really
No, no, not.
Change any behavior.
Eight plus five.
Eight plus five?
Yes. That's what, last year it was nine plus five.
I mean, I think that, and I'm sorry I'm late, I was on a work hall stuff.
You can't participate because you weren't sworn in.
Sorry. I'm not a member.
How dare you, how dare you bring that up?
So I think that, I mean, I think that, that it's fair to pay a guest fee plus a fee for water aerobics. Like, you know, it's a nice service that, you know, if you were to go to any gym or whatever, you know, you pay for it as a guest. Yeah.
Probably pay about $15 or 20 to do this in a, if you weren't a member of a, of a club.
Right. Yeah.
Well, that, that would mean it would be a total of 13, five plus eight from last year is what it comes down to.
Works for me.
But guess who the three of you want to put that in there?
Or 10 bucks total. I mean, you know, I don't, the amount doesn't, I, I think it's just more.
I want to make sure that we don't become a best buy for water aerobics for people outside of the neighborhood. This is to be a neighborhood thing. We took, we took the, the fees off it to encourage our neighbors to do this. I don't want to encourage other people from outside the neighborhood to come as a regular thing because we are cheap and $5 is cheap. And so that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, so you, so do you want to?
So I want to amend that. Let's, let's make it.
Make it five and five or five and eight or what?
I was thinking 12 altogether, but I don't.
That was a nice round number here.
I, I don't know.
And, and what is the, what is the system for collecting the guest fee?
Linda handles that.
Well, now they, so it's down there after the class is over. So now the lifeguards will collect it when they check, check them and directly from the residents account.
But I mean, if you're a guest, like my guest can't just go up and say, I'm Shannon's guest, here's $5. No.
Oh, yeah, it should be in the rule that you have to be accompanied by your, by the.
Right, your guests have to come with you. You can't just come and.
And there also should be a limit on the number of guests you can have.
All right, so we'll take your amendment as $12 for, for a guest, which is five plus seven in effect. Is that where you are?
No, 13.
13, okay, all right. Do others support 13?
Can I ask another question? Why is the limit 22?
That was the coach water aerobics.
Because why?
Second, the amount of people they handle plus the pool size where they are in the even.
You wouldn't want to have a class of, that's already pretty big.
How many lanes does the?
Think of a class teaching 22.
They're not getting five lanes.
22, that's, and, and it's.
How many ways?
Okay, so right now there is no problem. If we find out, if there, if we find out that there is so much interest in water aerobics, which would be wonderful, then we can address, that'll be a nice problem to have. So let's see how this works now, address the excellent concern. And I do think that we also should put in the rule that you can only have one guest, just to make sure that they don't invite the whole world. And then let's see how it works and we can revisit it during the summer.
And to make sure that people always have plans on their account because if it comes up negative, it's, it creates a whole problem. Then they have to ask people to live up. So.
Well, that's something that, that's something that you can put in the instructions, but that's not something that the council needs to bother with. But I do think it would be good if EJ went down there and personally explained it to the regulars.
And maybe we need to take 22 off the table. Maybe that's just, that's fine for the.
Let, let's see how it goes.
I know that that's fine for our pool.
I was there last year.
How many lanes did you have?
And we had more than 22. I think this is why she has reduced it. It was more than 22 some days. And it had no effect on lap swimmers at all. I saw the lap swimmers there and they were.
How many lanes did you have?
I don't remember how many.
See, that's, that's the issue.
But there weren't enough lap swimmers to be effective.
Yeah, so like I say, let's, let's, that's, that's the kind of thing that, let's let the manager handle and don't, I mean, I mean, your role is really in the policies, not the operation. So if it's a problem.
Like I'd like to make a policy, it's no more than four lanes because then that gives two lanes for lap swimmers.
Okay.
And don't be fooled by that.
Okay, so to do that, to, to that, that we go into the pool rules, not the fee schedule.
Rules already state as many lanes as are needed. I do remember reading that.
Yeah, but that's, that does not, and, and you know, you might think that it's not a problem because maybe I decide I'm not going to swim Monday晚上in front of because there's, there's too few lanes. I went down there before and I had to wait too long because, because water aerobics had taken over. I think we have to have a fine balance.
Okay, so.
Those lanes aren't fully used anyway.
Okay, so remember tonight, we're discussing the fee schedule. So that, that's another issue that we'll be happy to put on a work session for next month, discussion.
All right, $13 is my final offer.
All right. Do others support putting this on the June agenda, which will, by that time, will be in a couple of weeks of water aerobics? All right?
Yes.
It's fine.
Okay, okay, all right.
Until then, what happens between now and June? What's, what's the, what's the?
We leave it up to the, we leave it up to, you know.
What are they going to collect from the guests until then?
Yes, right now, until you change it.
Yeah, we can't formally vote on it.
But let's, look, everything works smoothly today. Let's put the faith in our pool management company and our town staff to fix all that and not, you know, I think it's going to work out. It's very exciting.
All right, so we're agreed anyway that the fee schedule with this amendment will be passed at our June meeting then. All right.
Do we need to discuss any of the other?
Uh, well, if you'd like to bring up any of the questions over.
I would like, I would like to bring up. What are they going to go? Um, can I just talk about the construction? You wanted the recreational or the construction first? I think I'm going to do this.
Let's start with the first page, construction first.
Okay, so on the construction, regarding this proposal for the additions, it's 200, 400, 600, 800. Can you just walk me through the arithmetic? Because this seems actually to be a reduction compared to what we did before. So if I understood, previously it was, if you had more than 200 square feet, it's $200 and then a dollar per square foot above 200. So which is basically, you know, if you are doing 1,000 square feet, it was $1,000. With this now, it's $800 for 1,000 square feet, if I understand it, or 600 actually. So this is actually going in the opposite direction from what we had hoped to accomplish, at least what I thought we were trying to do. So if, if, if we're going to come up with a scale thing, a scaled fee structure, it has to be steeper than it is now in order for it to be it's less generous than the past. I see no reason why the fees should be going down for construction. The whole discussion we had was that the larger, the, the larger the construction project, the more burden it is for the town staff. And therefore we need to be increasing, but maybe I'm not calculating this correctly, but the arithmetic is, what I said was, this is a huge reduction in fees.
So this was done because according to my notes, the council wanted to encourage renovations over new home constructions. So the new home construction was raised and then currently, as you mentioned, the building additions really don't have a cap. This was to put a cap on it so that the fee schedule reflects the town priority of renovation over home construction.
Okay, I understand that. I mean, for me, I would have.
I mean, I could, we, of course.
The discussion with all of you.
I would have then left the, the fees as they were and increased them for the new home, but not reduce the fee for the additions and even as they are, but yeah.
I mean, I, as a revenue manager, which I actually am, I think that, you know, we, we shouldn't steer step goes the same way. Like you should, for more than 1,250 square feet, it should not be, you know, the two plus two plus two plus two. It should be a higher amount in my view. Like we want to encourage, you know, smaller renovations. And so if you do it less than 200 square feet, that's $200 and then 200 to 400 square feet should be, you know, closer to five, 600, you know what I mean? So it's not just dull.
Okay, what, this is for you all.
In my opinion.
I think so. Yeah, I mean, I, I think I also, the, what was it? The dollar per square foot? Dollar per square foot. Also seem like reasonable benchmark that might solve everything.
Yeah, that again.
Just use that as the unit.
It would also make it easy.
Could make it easy to explain. Yeah. Because explanations.
So if you do like 1,250, then you would pay 1,250?
Yeah.
I like that.
That's, that's the way it was.
So the three of you, remember, it's all about three of you making the change because then it has to go through. Then we have to convey this to the public to see what, before you vote on it.
Is it inappropriate to say, well, it used to be a dollar a square foot, now we make it $2 a square foot? Whatever we do, it has to be easy.
Let, let me give you a counter. I don't necessarily agree with it, but, but the idea is absolutely one on very renovations. But we also want to discourage somebody who has been creative with renovations, which is trying to basically create a new house, which is really a renovation because he knows he'll get a discount, basically. So one of the ways we could do this is to have a J scale. In other words, so it's 200, 400, 600, and then like 2,000. So that when it goes higher, it's a signal that we know we're really building a new house at that point.
That's, I think that's what you, you were suggesting. It's exponential, not.
My, my understanding, and maybe it's wrong, is that Montgomery County used to allow for basically a, a new home with one safe quarter of a house, but they don't allow for that anymore.
If, if the 50% is the definition for.
So they have to hold 50% of the house?
Yeah, right. But I mean, if you look at the one on Grantham, which was a renovation, according to, admittedly, this wasn't, this was upward floors, but they doubled the size of the house on the renovation. And it wasn't bad because it went straight up. It didn't actually cover a lot more ground. It did cover some more ground. So even with a 50% renovation, you can get very substantial.
And that didn't count as a new home?
It didn't, doesn't count as a new home because it was, I had to get through it. Thing was still less than 50%, I guess. It might have been because it was just upper floors and no new, no expansion or very little expansion.
But, but that's like, you know, in a way encouraged because like they didn't, why, they didn't expand their footprint of the house into more land, which is, you know, what the whole kind of thing is. Like I think I'm here, you know, looking at down these fees. I, I think that, you know, I don't know, we might want to look at the stormwater fee. And, you know, how that kind of works with all that. Because, you know, there's definitely now, the, the new home fee of 5,000 is a lot more, but the new construction fee of, of the stormwater isn't, isn't that much more. It's double the 400 square feet. You know, so we might want to make that closer to 800 or, you know, I, I don't know what, if we figured out kind of what Bayland charges and like if we kind of cost out what our actual like costs would be for stormwater management, that, you know, maybe not your cost of like your salary, but like what we actually pay out to Bayland to go through these things. And I think that we should be close to what we pay out and not eat a lot of that.
So two comments on that is Bayland charges 1,200 per project.
So I think that we should at least have new construction be at 1,200.
And then also just add quickly to is with our new permitting initiator, we're working on hopefully reducing our reliance on Bayland. Not that that applies to the fees, but just.
Right, right, right.
So the one thing I want to point out is you're not under the gun to change this tonight. So if you, if you can't come to any kind of consensus, it can be revisited at any time in the future.
All right.
I have a quick question.
But these are all excellent questions and, and maybe you need to think about it some more.
Yeah, like if Bayland's fee is 1,250 per house, when, if I, if I were working on a project and I, and I, Bayland came and told me what I had to do or whatever, would I then have to go hire somebody else to help me think that through? Or do I have enough guidance from Bayland to then go and do what I need to do? I guess I'm kidding. Is if I, if I pay 1,250, because I kind of think that that's what it costs us, we should pass that on. Is it going to cost me another 1,250, let's say, to hire a contractor to say, well, you need rain gardens, you need this and you need that? You know?
I, well, you can, I, I, you know, for a brand new house, they're going to have that anyway. They're going to have a water engineer, all that stuff. I guess the question is like on the smaller deals that Bayland does, can you rely on Bayland to say, put in a rain garden and I can go do that?
In most smaller projects, not all, but yeah.
Yeah.
And then but like you said, with new construction, they're already going to.
You don't have.
By extensive construction, they'll already be doing that.
Why is Bayland charging us 1,250 no matter the project? It's a tiny little.
That was.
That's our.
Agreement signed a couple of years ago.
So Bayland at the moment is now only doing new construction and?
Yeah, we're, yeah, so we are actually working with our permitting initiator to take on the smaller projects.
So, I mean, we could elevate the new construction only to the Bayland price of 1,250 and then leave the others alone. Would that make sense?
And it's 1,200.
1,200.
So, so let me ask a question with that. I mean, we have a contract with Bayland, but it's not, it doesn't require us to use him, right? It does?
No, it doesn't require.
Right, so, so I don't think a lot of you are really totally satisfied with Bayland. So maybe we should ask the town manager to find some other options too, right? I don't, I mean, is anybody, I think a lot, that's what I've heard.
Council wanted to be looking at other options too. The town's.
I, I wouldn't be opposed to looking at someone else. I don't, I mean, to me, they green lighted everything.
And we can, the town, we can terminate if that convenes the contractor, Bayland. So we're not opted.
Maybe we can assume that anybody else, any other contractor would charge around the same thing, so they didn't pull that number out of the air.
Well, let's ask the town manager to price some of the stuff out because you also can have more than one, you, you can have more than one approved contractor for him to use, right? Right, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes, that's right, Mr. Mayor.
Might be a good idea.
Yeah.
And let me ask, is it, is it X? Is it okay or is it not okay to have our construction fee schedule reflect near total cost recovery? Or is it?
And that's a good question of the town manager.
Is it okay to do that?
Got it, attorney.
Yeah, so case law provides that the fees, generally speaking, cannot be revenue generating, cannot be taxes. They need to be reasonably related to the costs of administering your permitting framework. So it is legitimate to say the new construction projects have a larger fee because there's a lot more intensive review that goes into that. So the town's expenses are, are greater. And generally speaking, you, you can't say we want to, you know, encourage one type of construction over another. So we're going to change the rates based on that. It has to be related instead to the cost of administering the program. Now, a new addition, I'm sorry, new construction is more complicated than an addition. So that gives you the justification to raise the fee for new construction. And yes, the fees can be the same amount that you're costing, or the town must pay to administer, but in that case, they're going to be very, very high and probably too high. And so most jurisdictions will say, we recognize it for a small town, there's a cost of doing business. We can't recoup 100% and we have to rely on independent contractors. So yes, you can do it, but from a practical standpoint, I don't think it would be practical to try and recover all your costs.
I mean, I think for the sake of informed decision-making, it would be useful for the council, for the next council meeting to have cost analysis from you.
I agree with that.
Just let us know what it is. We may not, as you say, we may not go 100% cost recovery. We may have 50%, 60%, whatever it is, but I don't even know what that denominator is. And so I think that if we could just have an assessment net of your cost, in other words, these are costs of all the various consultants and non-staff costs. What does it cost typically for a 200 square foot, 500 square foot, more than 1,000 square foot addition? How much is it costing us for the stormwater for these different sizes of projects? And so just give us, and just do this cost analysis for us. And I think then we can make. And so just give us a, you know, just do this cost analysis for us, and I think then we can make an informed decision.
Yeah, I think if it's easier for you, it might be just an addition versus new construction, cause I imagine two hundred versus four hundred doesn't make a lot of difference. But a new construction sure does, so that, the contrast. Alright.
Yeah, but I'm I'm sure there is some differentiation between complex projects and not so complex, so I mean, I I would like to be able to see. Whether Shannon and I are making sense when we say there should be some scaling up if it's more complicated. Uh, because if there's a pretty much a flat thing anyway, then we'll take a decision on that basis, so I think. I mean, I would really like to understand, not just an average, but also to understand if there is really a significant difference. Between relatively small and simple projects and larger ones, are larger ones always truly more complex and more expensive? Uh, you know, meaningfully so.
It's becoming clear that we're not fully um comfortable with the fees as have been presented tonight, is that sense of the rest of the council?
Yeah, that's, I would, I would like to see a a cost.
I think the cost analysis will be helpful, and but I I was getting comfortable with some of what we were discussing, like on the addition, the logic of it. And and the stormwater cost recovery, so we might be much further along than, than, but maybe getting the cost.
I don't think we've finished yet. So. Alright.
Should we discuss the other things?
Any other comments on this page?
I mean, now that I'm like looking at this a little closer. The fees for construction. You know. The the tree removal fees are. Um. To me, like, I I guess like, well, so it's like fifty dollars per tree. And then three or more is still fifty dollars per tree, I guess the only difference there is that you have to have a bond. Um, but are these healthy trees we're talking about?
Uh, any canopy tree, as long as it's not an emergency. So, healthy, basically, any non-hazardous, even dead trees.
And then it's our, it's our. We then still have to approve as a council the removal of these trees, so we could say no.
Yeah.
Um. You know, I would maybe raise the tree fee.
Wait, wait, so emergency tree, you still think pay a fee? If. I don't think there's anywhere that says in emergency you don't pay a fee, right, Mr. Town Manager, Mr. Town Attorney?
I believe that's right, Mr. Mayor, I'm looking now.
You do, is that what it says on there?
That's not what it says on there.
You know, I don't think in an emergency.
This is basically the construction.
What?
Can, yeah, can I, I think.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Sorry, I think I would do, um, I think that I would put it more in as healthy tree removal. Because, you know, there's nothing worse than paying, you know, being sad that you're losing a tree. And then you have a fee on top of it, it's dead tree that you have to remove, you know what I mean, like, you're already paying thousands of dollars to get this tree removed. And we shouldn't really charge on top of that, in my opinion. But if it's a healthy tree that you want removed because you're building a pool or a house or this or that, I think the fee should be higher.
Also, I just wanna glean up too for your discussion that our fee schedule only charges the fee for canopy trees. Um, I don't know the history behind it, but there's no current fee for ornamental trees.
Okay. But but what if you have a dead canopy tree?
Then it would be, a a dead canopy tree would be fifty dollars, we haven't been, uh, if it's hazardous, we haven't traditionally charged. Um, but that's like if it's about the ball, um, but if it's a dead tree, then we still.
I think I would just make dead trees free. And, you know, per our Dr. Feather, not just you can't determine yourself that you have a dead tree.
But but remember that, but remember what the town attorney just said, that you you can, you can have fees reflect. Some of the costs of it, so you know, when when there's a dead tree, we still have to have pay Dr. Feather. Because we don't want, because in the old day, in the old days. We relied on on the citizen to say, oh, it's dead, but we want, we want expertise.
I'll just, a quick story, which was, we had a large oak. Large oak which was um dying, but it was not dead, um, still leafed every year. Uh, it had a problem though, which was it was dropping large branches and on the ground and close to neighbors' houses. And it's not a good way to be friendly with your neighbor when the tree is. So, uh, we decided it had to come down and that when we went through the process and yes, absolutely. Um, Talbert had to come out and and review it and agreed that it needed to come down, it was dangerous. Um, we, I think it was a thirty dollar bond we paid, uh, to get it down, actually. But in any case, yes, there is a process that costs town money in order to remove trees, what's on even when it's dying.
I I think the town attorney's gonna say something.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the code section one eighty-two four provides, no permit is required for a tree removal if it's an emergency. If the town determines that immediate destruction or removal of a tree is necessary to abate a substantial imminent. An immediate danger to life or property.
That that sounds pretty, that sounds pretty, alright. Um. Sounds you could abuse that, who determines the emergency?
Yeah, how much.
I mean, maybe that should be defined what's an emergency.
Well, and Dr. Feather will confirm, like, we'll just be able, we'll just send Dr. Talbert out immediately when it's, uh, if somebody like it's an emergency. Um, and then he'll determine if it actually. So far it's been, been his judgment. Yeah.
I mean, to to um, the council president's story, so. The, we are a town that loves our trees and wants to protect our trees. So a lot of times when, so for that story, the the reason why people want to take down the tree because the branches were falling. Well, there's a way, i- if people spend enough effort and time and expense on maintaining their trees properly. The branches don't fall.
It was struck by lightning.
Okay, but that's it, but but there's a lot of, there's a lot of, there's a lot of of our residents that don't pay attention to their trees. And so they might be a nuisance only because they're not maintaining them. And if that leads to the tree being requested to take down, that's sad, I wanted to make that political statement, that's sad. Right? Because, and and I think what we should do is encourage through our, and maybe Dr. Feather can write. An article about tree, that, because I, cause I personally spent a lot of. Um, efforts on maintaining my trees, like, I don't want my that beautiful big oak to ever, you know, fall down. So it's cut back all, you know, professionally.
Yeah.
Cause I, and and that's what it should be, cause I don't want these trees to. Where where trees sitting. Okay, I'm sorry, I regret that.
So sad.
Alright, so uh, there is no fee for emergency tree removal then, uh, and it's only canopy trees that have a fifty dollar per tree. Um, Shannon, were you wanting to spend it up for more than three, three or more trees, or you have fifty dollar per tree, you know, that level?
I think that we should add in like healthy tree removal fee.
I was gonna, I didn't mean to jump in, I was thinking, we probably wanna increase this fee, be where your instincts are going, but we may wanna get the costs and.
Yeah.
As a foundation, when we connect next, because it will automatically go up, when we look at the cost, and out there it's fifty dollars. You know, and it's a hundred percent more than that.
Yeah, well, Talbert has seen more than fifty dollars.
And if there was a, just a note, I, if um, it was for healthy trees, we would wanna add an asterisk, asterisk, basically say, as determined by the town office.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I just think that, um. Because of tree city, you know, that we don't want to really have people removing healthy canopy trees. And, you know, I mean, I think that we all agree that there's enough gray area for most of these trees that they, you know, Dr. Feather deems them to be unhealthy. So, a lot of the times, but I think it's really goes, it ties back to the whole new construction. Because these trees are generally speaking in a footprint where they would want.
Yeah, I'm right.
Alright.
I have one other question on your sheet. Right-of-way agreements, this is more procedural question, do they get, to review, are they timely in some ways? Are they for life, so you get a right-of-way, it's paid two hundred dollars, then you have a right-of-way at the life?
I think that question.
That's one, that's the town attorney.
I I couldn't hear this question about the right-of-way permit fee?
What does that even mean?
So this road that's here. Leads to the property.
Oh, yeah.
And so they have, there's a right-of-way agreement that it's there leading to their property, is that correct?
Yeah, it's a one-time fee.
It's a one-time fee, but the agreement is lifetime.
Correct.
Yeah, so I'm wondering if one should have a. Uh, one of them did in the sense that he had to review. It every five years, you know, it doesn't have to be every two years, but like five, seven year cycle. It's not relevant to the fee schedule, but it was, or to that, you don't get a chance to review those.
Well, that's a very good question, and on the town attorney's to-do list is a review. Of all of the easements in the in the town.
Exactly, I think we need to, we need to maybe move that up your to-do list.
Yeah. Do do we have any residents who've uh, paid that fee or just public utilities?
I'm sure residents, I'm sure residents in the past have paid it, um. It has not honestly come up in the last year since I've been managing.
Alright. Okay, so to review, um, we want to go back to the dollar per square foot on the additions. Older format on that, um. On the, um.
We were raising it.
Yeah, I mean, I wanna be very clear, I'm not, actually, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I actually wanna see a cost analysis, I'm I'm not, I mean, I don't know.
What's the cost analysis of everything, alright.
I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with any particular structure without really knowing what. I feel that, you know, I I have to make a more informed decision than simply coming up with.
Okay.
I'm through it as well, at the same time, I thought the point you were making and Shannon will be, yeah, would, making also made sense, where it could be a J. Uh, or, what do you call it, exponential, non, what would the, there were different, three different phrases were used, but the same point.
Goes up.
But we could, yeah, we could keep it up to twelve fifty at a dollar, and then twelve fifty or more could be two dollars. So I I I see the logic of that, um, uh, but it would be good to get the cost basis. So we show that we are not using it as an implicit tax.
So we wanna cost basis on that and also related to stormwater charges, right? Same kind of thing.
Same law, stormwater, at least we know for now, it's twelve hundred for new construction, so we could easily make that. Change for number three. Question is, are we okay with one and two, one fifty, two fifty?
Which was, that was Roger's, Roger's question.
Which is the cost, though we know it's less than.
Yeah.
But we are trying to, you know, accommodate because we have given exceptions to people.
Right, it may be the case though, that there's no greater cost to fewer than four hundred square feet versus four hundred square feet or greater. Um, but there's obviously a greater cost for new construction.
So why don't we go back to this, after we get our, our fee things, then we can make a informed decision.
Yeah.
Okay, and so we're we're gonna stay at fifty dollars per tree uh, for the moment, or?
I think that there was, I think what Shannon was saying makes a lot of sense, this fee probably needs to go up, but we should probably again get the cost basis. So we we don't end up doing what. Um, the attorney said, that it becomes an implicit tax.
Alright, so depends on the cost basis, alright, um, page two, um. We, we had a discussion previously and decided to take down the town all rental fees, so that's why that's not proposed to be a hundred and fifty. Um.
I'm comfortable with the town of rental proposal because I think it's informed by the staff dollars, the real costs and efforts involved.
Alright, um. I think that's the thirty-five dollars is the tennis club recommendation on that one, um. Guest pass is five dollars, we've decided, um. Pool party, we're not changing. Big bird swim is going up. We talked about water aerobics and we've already voted on the guest fee thing, which uh, to bring it up in a meeting.
Why is early bird called up?
Cause it's costing more money.
It's costing more money.
Yeah, it actually, the real cost for the swimmers would be one seventeen, but. I suggested we put it one fifteen and the town throw in the extra two dollars. A hundred, a hundred, it used to be a hundred, now everyone's starting to pay. Forgot, but everybody else is starting to pay, um, and uh, we ju- it just got one seventeen, it seemed like such a. Arbitrary number, it wasn't, and if you think I'm wrong, and I'm sorry.
You came up with a very round number for the water aerobics guest.
I, you know what?
Thirteen, huh? Thirteen, precise, lucky thirteen.
Me, and that's, that's a whole different thing, I just, when I thought about water aerobics, I didn't feel that residents should be paid for guests, that's all.
No, that's, I'm just worried, I hope this doesn't give in and be made water, it's free, a few, uh, speaking punitive on another group.
I I think it's just so different, like, these early bird swimmers, like, get such a unique experience of having their own neighborhood pool. Open for them outside of regular hours, and they're lap swimmers, and they know, I mean, it's hard to find pools and lap swimming places. Like, it's a really big benefit to have that, I don't think they're gonna be upset with that.
You are a laps.
I am, I am, I am part of this group, and nobody cares.
Nobody cares.
Nobody cares, I could, we could have done it at one seventeen, and maybe that would still lead me not to.
No, it's fine.
Um, but, but I will tell you that there are other communities in Montgomery County that have have neighborhood pools similar to us. And they have early morning swim open for everybody. So, this is unique maybe for.
That we charge.
And we charge, and nobody is complaining, we have, we have to hire a lifeguard, and that's what this money was for.
What is the revenue back? Well, that's the, I mean, that's the general point I wanted to make is that, um, I mean, I I was gonna ask this question about the tennis fee as well. I'm I'm not sure I've I've really understood as a resident and now as a council member. Why the swimming pool is free for residents, but there's a thirty-five dollar annual fee for tennis, uh, tennis courts. What's the rationale for charging for one community recreational asset and not for the other?
It is probably because when, at the time, remember when the pool opened a hundred years ago, it was a membership.
Right.
And when they, when they, when the council got rid of it, they didn't think about, oh, let's also get rid of it for the tennis.
You proposing that you would like to eliminate the tennis?
I am, I would like to see equity between the tennis courts and the pool, because I can't, because I can't explain to myself the rationale.
I feel like, I I feel, maybe I'm totally wrong, I've never been to early morning swim, and I have no idea. But like, I do feel like, you know, a little bit with the tennis and a little bit with the early morning swim and these fees, like. It's almost like they wanna see who like, who will shove it out, you know, and so then they limit and say, you can't go in the tennis court. Cause you have a bigger fee, you know, and like, so that you're not fighting with people for reservations, like, same thing with early morning swim. I have no problem paying for it because like, I want my lane, you know, and and so, but if you open it up. Then it's more people that you would potentially.
You're afraid that you will not be able to get your lane, yeah, same as in the court.
Difference between the swimming pool, general admission, and lanes and courts is that it's a defined space that you need to.
It's a, it's a usage control mechanism.
But I mean, I, it's, it's, it's how it began.
Right.
It began, I don't know, we're doing this maybe twenty years now, and it began that a bunch of us said, hey, you wanna swim in the morning? And we hired, we hired the lifeguard, and it was, it was, um, was that actually Toby, Toby Cathan was one of the lifeguards. I mean, we did local kids, opened the pool, and it was sanctioned by the, by the, um, full company, it was okay.
Yes.
And it was a.
My son was one, one season.
Yes, but that was like two years ago, right, okay, but that, in the old days. You know, we just had to raise enough money to hire the lifeguard, that's all. And this is why I asked long ago, not that long ago, that we needed to look at fees as a group. Not like, oh, that's why I I opposed you taking away the, um, the water aerobics fee, cause it wasn't that it's a bad idea. I don't really think that was a bad idea, it was just that I wanted to look at everything, I wanted to look at tennis, I wanted to look at early swim. Yeah, I like early swim the way it is, but maybe that's not the right way to go, this isn't about me. I I wanted to look at what's right for the town with all of our specials.
Isn't this the opportunity now to do it? I mean, if we don't do it now, when will we do that, what you want?
Next season.
It it is the opportunity, and and frankly, to a large extent, we agree with the fees in front of us, I think there are three in question. There is the early bird swim.
There was the early bird.
And the water makes non-resident, which is a proposal, and now the tennis.
Like you forgot, stroke and term, I think, uh, that one, that's, was that not on the budget? Like you forgot stroke and turn, I think that one, that's, was that not on the budget?
That we we've, uh I thought, I I maybe, maybe, only assumption that we all aligned on that.
Yeah, but I'm not sure it's in the budget. That was gonna be one of my questions, is stroking turn in the budget? Okay, okay.
We approved the cost.
Okay, okay, I remember that, alright.
So uh is there a coach that?
Yeah, it's, it's this, it's the swim team coach. Uh it's part of the cost.
We probably benchmarked.
No, it's not part of the cost already.
So it's already, it was factored in the cost of the swim team coach.
But are we paying extra to that coach for the?
Pay extra for stroke and turn.
Yeah, but uh, but the budget item for the coaches.
Inclusive of that service.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. I know that's a separate.
So then it's really these three fees that are, uh the water aerobics non resident.
Right.
Either it's ten dollars, twelve dollars, thirteen dollars.
Million.
Or million dollars. The early bird, which feels right to you. And then there's the early bird swim.
Right.
Which is a self inflicted fee miraculously, and then there's the tennis. Self inflicted fee, so these are, these are the three.
Except self inflicted.
I will say two things, I've done it, thirty five dollars does not hurt our town residents play tennis. They have agreed to it, but they even raised, even they raised it themselves from twenty five to thirty five themselves. I'm not gonna stop them doing that.
But but I mean, it is true, like there, there really isn't actually like a line item that that goes to, whereas like the early bird swim. We pay lifeguards and that is a totally different.
Makes sense that there is a logic there.
The tennis, I, you know, I pay it every year and I barely use courts, I should go more, but.
Is that for the household? So that, so there's no equity there because a household of six pays the same as a household of one.
Yeah.
So the fee makes no sense at all.
No, and it's not, and it doesn't go to anybody.
So, okay, let's wait.
But I guess indirectly. The capital fund to maintain.
I have a look.
Yeah, so we, we did do that, like, but but I mean, so we just had a big tennis room, like um, we just redid the courts or whatever.
Yes.
And I think that capital wise, like we actually don't do that much a year, but I mean, the funds did go to resurfacing the courts, I I guess.
The fees are like two grand or something. It's not a separate.
It's, you know, it's up to the, it's up to the five of you. Makes no sense to me, but it's up to the five of you.
Spirit of giving the VRN.
Halfway to Christmas.
Yeah, we are almost there.
Christmas in July.
One note when discussing tennis theaters will make is that for this year, a lot of people have already paid.
Second, I can't return this.
We can give them refunds.
He just already spent the money.
And so have the swimmers, I mean, right, Justin, did most of the swimmers pay?
Yeah, a lot of them.
I'm gonna do that, just be prepared.
So maybe we don't increase the fee for that.
Right, good, okay.
No, it was already thirty five last year.
You've already. I guess I haven't paid mine.
Last year we raised it.
Right, okay.
So so this is a staying, this is staying at what was.
That period was like.
So how about this is something for the next year, we consider it, if it's already people have paid. That seems logistically complicated.
Well, I don't know that you can do it a year because tennis courts are year round.
Oh, yeah, sure. So we could, so what what does that mean? That feels unfair.
Fiscal year don't line up.
I I I I honestly, I'd be inclined to let the tennis committee. Recommend to us what fee would be appropriate. They have done a good job, they have raised, come in and raised the fee. Um themselves.
Well, that because it appears to be a usage control.
Uh no, I I'm making that up in my own brain.
I think it adds up, it adds up.
When you pay it, when you pay the fee, you get the code.
Hmm.
And you can't get the code unless you pay the fee.
It's a usage, but but you're saying people have already paid for this scam.
Yeah, for this counter, so.
Has has any, has there ever been a discussion with tennis committee saying, why should the tennis courts cost us money?
No, they say we have absolutely no problem paying it.
It's negligible, it's not a big deal. We maybe we. If it was for next calendar year, that's starting the next calendar year, so we could, we could institute that. I'm I'm comfortable with that.
My, my. I think that if I were on the tennis committee, I would, I can understand where they're coming from. Every few years, there's a resurfacing, new nets have to be purchased. New bins and new things have been purchased. It's a, it's a. It simplifies the advocacy for all of those expenses if you've been paying into the time.
So they can say we have to do it and we have.
Otherwise, you know, the last thing you want to see is the tennis courts looking like some sidewalks.
Right.
Um and so, so we should probably have a a membership fee for sidewalks, right, in the sidewalks.
It's a good point.
But we also had a seven hundred thousand dollar fee for the pool.
Yeah.
Like, you know, renovation, that, you know, we don't.
No, I think we are aligned that these are important community services. We are not gonna shortchange that. Maybe there was a time when that was up for debate. I don't feel that's up anymore.
I need to say, so the early bird swim and by the way, I just paid my fees, Dustin.
One seventeen or?
Two thirty. Okay, but um. Uh if this became a community, a thing that wasn't more or less volunteer. You'd have another problem on your hands. Because somebody then from the town would have to get up every day at six thirty and decide if they're swimming or not. And you know who that someone is every day? You, me. Or might visit me if I'm traveling, because it it became a volunteer thing.
Yeah.
So then we'd have to get a staff member to run, to run the morning swim.
This is early birds.
This is early bird swim.
Okay.
So put that in your pocket, boys.
I definitely follow that. You're saying that if we.
What happens is the early bird swim has to be managed.
I see, as in you police it before?
No, managed, because it might be a thunderstorm.
I see.
But that should all be put in the contract with the management.
We do have other things on the agenda for tonight, I'm just saying.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, let's leave the tennis fee as it is and for the years already underway.
Okay, right.
Alright, so we we are gonna come back to the fee once we have a cost analysis of. That will help us determine the fees for several things. So we have some ordinances, uh potential ordinances coming up that our town's attorney have drafted and I I will write. I will let the town attorney walk us through them. First one is what ordinances in regard to established building line and driveways, so.
Okay, thank you. So council may remember, we've discussed. The need to clarify definition for the established building line, especially based on cul-de-sacs. And it it wasn't clear to us whether properties along a cul-de-sac, especially at the. The tip of the circle were to be included or not. The council, through discussions, decided those lots should be included and so this edit would reflect that. And then since then, another issue arose and and that's whether. We should treat an intersection as an intersection that is shown on a plat, but one that hasn't been actually constructed yet. And it 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 seems logical to exclude those because the established building line is aimed at. Calculating what exists i- in physical form, not in theory. And so if a intersection hasn't been built yet, there wouldn't be any established building line along the same side of the street. Because there's no actual street yet. So this ordinance would also clarify that. Paper streets, paper intersections are not included, the definition of established building line. And also, it it makes other clarifying edits. The code currently provides that. If a property has more than one curb cut. The second curb cut is deemed lawful and can remain, but there's no express provision saying you can only have one curb cut per lot. So this ordinance would would add that you can only have one curb cut per lot and also add criteria for the council to consider. When reviewing a request for a new or a second curb cut, including location of trees. Safety a- and such. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody?
Yes.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, um so I mean, on the established building line part, I don't have any comments, I have a comment on the driveway part.
Okay.
Uh you know, with apologies for violating protocols, I I asked you a question about. Uh we the issue of when sidewalks cross over driveways. Um and so my, my question is whether. This order, you know. I I I don't know if everybody's familiar with what that was, so now that we are in an open meeting here, just to clarify what it is. Uh there are many instances where the. Side, where the sidewalk and the driveway overlap. The, the, you might say the sidewalk slash driveway is in pretty bad condition. And so I'd asked Ron the question uh somewhat inappropriately, but the the issue was, who's responsible? For maintaining uh these stretches of sidewalks because they go over the driveway and my understanding is correct. Uh the town attorney has said that it is the residence response, the homeowner's responsibility currently to maintain that. Um and.
Which is unique to our town, correct, Mr. Town Attorney?
I think this.
That's right, Mr. Mayor.
I think this really should be amended. I think the sidewalks are sidewalks, whether they go over the driveways or not. And it's a bit, it's a bit odd to have a situation where we are, you know, thanks, thanks to EJ now fixing all the sidewalks. But hey, where the sidewalks go over driveways, it's a lottery, good luck, you know, some somewhere in good shape and some are in bad shape. And I think the sidewalks are a public good, uh and I think that uh, I don't, I don't know if this is the right place to do it. But I I do want to raise this question for you, Ron, uh as to where would be the right place to to clarify. That uh that it is the town that will be responsible.
This is the right place.
Yeah, this is the right place and and it certainly could be done in this ordinance. Or or you could do it later in a new ordinance, but section one seventy hyphen three of the town code is. Is probably the logical location where that clarification or that edit would be made. Is, you know, right now it does say someone needs a permit to repair their apron. And you could amend that to say that. Homeowners are responsible to install the initial apron, but after that, the town takes care of aprons. And as the mayor noted, the current town approach is somewhat unusual. There's generally two approaches, one. The uh the homeowner installs and maintains and two, the government maintains after the initial installation. And I think the latter approach is probably the better one because, you know, in in addition to what. Rohit said, it it's also the town's general duty to make sure the right of way is ADA compliant. And safe for pedestrian travel. And so for that reason, most jurisdictions prefer to do the apron work themselves. Also, you know, there's bulk savings in having them all done at the same time. And finally, if the the government's maintaining them, you can make sure that they're consistent in appearance and construction methodology.
Okay, let me give some historic perspective here. So, which I think I've told the story in the past. So when. Mister Larry Plummer was our town code enforcement officer. He noted that maybe, what was it, Mr. Town Attorney, like, was it like a third of our? Driveway aprons are not in compliance with the code.
Or different widths, yeah.
Yeah, and so. The the, at the council that time gave guidance to the staff. Don't mess with that because if we started citing everybody, it would be a big problem, there'd be an uproar. Now, the alternative that the town attorney just discussed, that of course has severe impact on the budget. But this could also be done over the court, you know, we could. You, the the council could direct the staff to identify all of the, the, in conjunction with passing this law. To identify all the aprons that are not in compliance and then put him on a, put it on a schedule. Because yes, it would cost, in in bulk, it would cost much less. And that probably would be the best thing to do for the, for the sake of the appearance and the safety of our citizens. But but I just want to give you that information as you make your decisions.
Uh uh can I add that we only have sidewalks from one half of our um. Streets, uh except in front of the school. So are we taking on responsibility for all aprons or only aprons where there is a sidewalk?
Ron, how how does that work in other jurisdictions? Because we're not unique in terms of having sidewalks.
Yeah, that that's a good question. I don't, I don't know if any jurisdictions have said we're only gonna repair those that have sidewalks. I would say one potential argument on the other side would be. Municipalities still like to ensure consistency in constructions, especially to preserve. Off street, I'm sorry, on street parking, yeah. Uh off site pro- parking um and apron width, it obviously is related to how much parking you have on the street. But yeah, certainly, certainly that could be done.
But I think also going to, to address your point, uh Robin. Uh in determining the schedule for repairs, one can de-prioritize. The other side because that's not necessarily as much of a safety hazard as it is on the sidewalk side. So even though the town would be legally responsible for both sides, financially you could prioritize. Side that is uh, we're the same usually. So anyway, I don't know uh how, what we should proceed here, but I would like to uh propose that. Uh request the town attorney to draft up. Uh a further edit to this, this section one seventy three. For a discussion at the next council meeting along the lines that that he described.
I'm in favor of that, but I also have questions on the EBL edits from where we uh, where you discussed.
It's on the, sorry, say it again, the, the tennis?
On the EBL, please, which is, I think the harder.
Carry on.
So a couple of clarifying questions. Should I go ahead with that or? Uh or should we, you want to resolve?
Flora Chores, go ahead.
I was just wondering, um Ron, if if we feel comfortable with the at least two buildings. And in practice, what happens if we are unable to add at least two buildings?
Yeah, that that has come up in Somerset before and Somerset has taken the administrative interpretation that in order to have an average. You have to have at least two to calculate the average and if there's only one other lot that qualifies. It 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 doesn't establish an average.
So then what would be the guidance to the council on the EBL in that case?
There would be no EBL, so yeah, if there are no, if there are insufficient number of properties to calculate the EBL, there is no EBL. And the default twenty five foot setback applies.
So I'm just concerned because if there is even one building that doesn't conform with that, then. Wondering if that's a, really an equity question.
Sure, yeah, it's it's a good question. I I would say arguments include that. You know, sure, if if the new home is built with a twenty five foot setback rather than matching what the one other. Building. Currently displays in terms of setback, you know, that could be a detriment to the existing neighbor. On the other hand, the existing neighbor could have. You know, a very odd setback, could be eighty feet, but what have you, so far away from the. Twenty five foot minimum that it's unfair to the the new owner to build. And so I think that's why. The EBL encompasses an averaging so that the anomalies are are dealt with and. And made a little more equitable and whereas if you're, you know, just stuck with what setback is presented by one other building. Right, it it could be inequitable, but I mean, arguments on both sides, obviously.
I I mean, I don't think there, there is no way to calculate an established building line, obviously, if there's only one other building and. I I mean, the twenty five foot minimum standard, I think, is is probably sensible under those circumstances. Uh Kevir, if you're kind of concerned with that or not?
No, I'm just thinking, I mean, I'm concerned not in the sense that we shouldn't move forward, I'm just trying to think through what could be.
Okay, alright, alright, alright.
But I appreciate that, Ron. Um so at least it helps us, but it doesn't resolve all cases, so.
Yeah, and and you always have, well. I mean, I guess one, one argument.
Yeah.
To to retain the existing approach is if, if it was very drastically. An anomaly like eighty five feet, then you do have the variance process to address something like that.
Fine, thank you.
Yeah, um. On, so we all agree that we would like.
On, so we all agree that we would like Ron to add Rohit's suggested amendment about, um, the town taking responsibility for driveways. Or are there other, are there other comments on that?
I'm in favor of the suggestion.
Shannon?
Which I understood to be around sidewalks being maintained by the town.
Yeah, where the sidewalks go over the driveways.
Yeah, I mean, the the only question I have remaining if we accept Rohit's principle that, yes, we include um, driveways even when there is no sidewalk on that side of the street. Um, but we deprioritize those. Suppose new homeowners buy a property and they want to improve the driveway because their cars go down, you know, um, and it's a mess. Um, what we do under those circumstances?
I think Ron said that.
Sure, yeah, I can I can address that, President Barr. So in other jurisdictions, for example, you know, the issue comes up often, maybe not often, occasionally. So, for example, some homeowners may have pavers made of gold in their apron and they want to retain those. And so that's when you do a a public right-of-way agreement that says, in this instance, because you want these gold pavers, we're going to allow you to I mean, reflecting that you're responsible for them. And when we come around and do our apron replacements, we're not going to replace your your gold pavers. You've got to take care of that. So same thing with, you know, additional widths. The code would say aprons have to satisfy the county standards, which were, you know, currently wanted to do something different than those county standards with respect to width, turning radii, then they would need special permission for that. And then that special permission would be reflected in a right-of-way agreement.
But I was just thinking of repairing a driveway that was in disrepair, that's all. Um, which you're saying, we, it sounds like they'd have to go through the town and get the town's agreement that they would take over responsibility for it.
Oh, well, if it if it's just that that they think it needs repair and the town has it on a repair schedule farther away than they'd like, then, yeah, they'd have to ask the town, can you advance the repair of this one? Or can you let us do it? And and I I think the town could say, yeah, we'll let you do it. Yeah, because it's not on our schedule yet. And what we'll let you do it and, uh, here's the standard you have to comply with.
All right, okay. With that clarification, then are we all happy and we can? Back to. All right. So we're ready to go on to the next ordinance, which is the use of registered pesticide on town property.
Yeah, I'm sorry, one second, I'm just making notes, I need to put in that other words.
Okay, the the second ordinance. And so this is actually the the third ordinance. Because as you'll see on pages three and four, I have some text that's highlighted. That's highlighted because this is text that's proposed in the next ordinance we're we're going to discuss. And I just wanted to highlight it here as, you know, this is something that's pending because I'm trying to keep track of two ordinances that are proceeding at the same time with respect to a a same code section. So for this discussion, you can ignore the highlighted text. And then at the top of page five, what this ordinance would do is say you cannot use on-town property, including town parks, any pesticides that are registered as prohibited by Montgomery County. Um, so when when Robin raised this question, I took a look at the county pesticide law, which does apply in the town currently. But interestingly, the county law says the prohibition applies to to county property. And so although the code, the county code is applicable in the town, if we want it to be applicable on town property in addition to county property, we need to so state. So this ordinance would say basically that it it's also, those registered pesticides are also prohibited on town property. And we would incorporate by reference the county's list of registered pesticides.
All right.
And then one other housekeeping measure that this ordinance would do. So right now, as the code is organized, we have one chapter entitled Town Property. But there's only one provision in that whole chapter, and that one provision says you can't intentionally damage town property. And it seems to me it would just make sense to delete that chapter and move that one provision into the, uh, chapter one forty-nine, which is Parks and Recs, because that chapter does have other provisions that refer to town property. So I'm just moving everything to the same location.
All right, all right. But it's really something very simple, this ordinance is, it's just extending an existing ordinance that covers residents' properties and county la- and county parks to our own town parks. That's that's all it's about.
That's correct.
Okay. So comments on this one? Just covering a whole.
Substance of it, I'm I'm absolutely fine with with the with the revisions. I just have a question about um, this paragraph R on page, what top of page five? It's not new, it's a new, it's an old, obviously old text. But just for the sake of clarity, it says that it is, it is prohibited to loiter in any town park or any other town property, but it's okay to loiter at the swimming pool and bath.
Yes, that's correct.
I guess there's a legal definition of loiter that means it's okay to hang around the swimming pool in the bathhouse.
Is that inside or outside?
You know, that's a good question.
In the water or outside? Well, that's what I'm saying, that's why.
That's a really good question. Why is that like that, written like that?
My my guess, Mr. Mayor, is that the original author figured it would be it'd be more difficult to determine whether someone's loitering around the pool in Bath House. But I'm just, I'm speculating.
Except, except loitering means an unauthorized person. So I guess, you know, a a member or a guest of the pool that's there is not loitering.
Well, yeah, yeah, I I think to me, loiter could also mean just just hanging about without any obvious purpose. So you you may have had a a legal reason to be there a couple hours ago, but ten hours later and just hanging about with no, you know, apparent reason.
I, to me, that seems to be a loophole that will allow the wrong, the unauthorized people to be hanging around there.
Sure, yeah.
And it doesn't even apply to hours, doesn't even say anything about hours.
You know what?
Yeah. We we could just delete with the exception. I I see no reason.
I would love to know the legislative history of that, those warnings, because it was probably never reviewed by an attorney.
Yeah, we should allow loitering at any time because we have neighbors. And so if a bunch of kids want to just sort of hang out down at the pool that you know, by the bathhouse and sit on the play equipment, that shouldn't be allowed. Pool's closed, go home. There should be no loitering around.
Abby, hold on, what what it said, I'm not, I think we should probably remove the exception, but it does say with the exception of Somerset and Bulbathas during pool operating hours. So that that is in there.
Okay.
Um, but on the other hand, I I I wouldn't want somebody strange loitering.
Yeah, we don't want, we don't, somebody, doesn't make any sense.
So I I'd be happy just to take out the exception.
Yeah, that's that's easy enough.
Hey, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, that's that.
So do three, remember to three.
Oh, there are three, I think I heard.
For introduction.
I heard three, right, okay.
So that'll be introduced.
All right, so on the 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 last ord- ordinance, uh, is the biomass one, right?
That's correct. And give me one second, and I'm I'm making this change to the loitering so I don't forget. Okay, done. Yes, and the third ordinance is the removal of biomass. And that would provide, as you'll see at the the bottom of page three, there there's currently a a prohibition from removing wood, turf, grass, et cetera, from town property. And we would expand it to broad, more broadly include vegetation. And then add a sentence that says to explain it in more detail that we're really concerned about biomass, including box or bush honeysuckle around the the creek and stream beds. And then the last sentence, we further prohibit the mowing or clearing of vegetation within town parks, which would address the situation where folks might think they're mowing their own yard, but they're actually entering the park and mowing. And then, yeah, that, so as you, as you recall, this is in response to a report and recommendation from the Parks Committee about the the proper maintenance of our biodiversity and the danger of erosion that's presented when vegetation, especially bush honeysuckles removed.
Sorry.
Um, all right, um, so, uh, any questions on this one?
Yeah, no, I'm in favor of this because it was proposed by someone, I'm forgetting his name.
Jeff.
Jeff, yes.
Yeah, my, my, I I I I'm not going to stand to my sword on this one, but I would not even accept, except leaf compost or leaf mulch. I would just kind of stop that too. Um, they are.
Yeah, and that's that's in the code now, President Barr, and I'm not sure why.
Yeah, I had that question.
Right, the point is that that's, they are highly beneficial to woodlands, uh, leaf compost and leaf mulch. In fact, um, they do many things, um, they are of great value. So, uh, taking them out does almost as much damage as pulling out bu- bush honeysuckles. So I suggest deleting that sentence in fact.
Can I, can I ask a couple of other questions? And so I I fully agree that I think we should remove that that, uh, sentence. Um, the, on on page one, Ron, i- is it essential to have a reference to a forest management plan? I mean, if at any particular time the town doesn't have a, an applicable forest management plan in place, and does that somehow affect the force of this ordinance or is it?
No, it do- it does not. The town's not required to have a forest management plan. And I just referred to it for a little bit of background, a little bit of justification for what we're doing, but, you know, we could say the same thing without reference to the plan, if you'd refer, if you'd prefer that.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, what others think about it, but uh, if if it has no impact on the legal force of it, I.
So does everybody agree it should be taken out?
Uh, the the sentence on removal of leaf compost, do we have three people in agreement?
On the leaf composting, yes, I agree.
Add two, there.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, all right, there is, all right.
And the forest management plan, I I don't have any strong views on that, so I'm not actually proposing it, but.
But yeah, I could delete the first phrase and that that last sentence of the third recital could just say the proper care and stewardship of the forest is necessary, et cetera, without reference to the plan, if you prefer.
And I think it would just be clearer that way and not and not get.
Okay.
Well, the thing is, this is just the introduction and then you can think about it and then
Okay.
decide any one way or the other.
Yeah. And similarly, similarly, the reference to the in in the next, very next paragraph, the the reference to, you know, limited to bush honeysuckle. That seems rather specific for an introduction, but is is that necessary or?
So it is, it is rather specific and, yeah, I I felt it helpful to actually point out bush honeysuckle because um,
I I I can.
I think as Robin explained, it's.
I I can take over on that, Ron, if you'd like.
Yeah.
Um, bush honeysuckle is a really good example because it is highly invasive. And it is recommended for removal in most contexts because it is highly invasive. But when it is the only thing on a stream bed holding the soil together, do not ever remove it until you come up with a real solution. So that's, that's why it's there. It's like, this is a red flag under most circumstances, but not here. It's it.
Yeah, I I have strong views on that. But the, I was going to say, in addition to, uh, the the revision to, um, paragraph R on the, um, exception of the Somerset Pool and Bath House. I also wanted to ask whether on in in paragraph P, where it says to enter in an unauthorized manner or to trespass into the fenced pool area or bathhouse, can we also add there the tennis courts?
Sure, yeah.
So I would like to propose that we add specifically tennis courts in P. Just so that we have that in our, in our.
But but maybe we should have that for all, uh, Somerset. Yeah, all town property.
Inclusive of these, that would be a more expensive.
Don't you think, Mr. Town Attorney, all town?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just trying to think of the legislative intent here and maybe they were just thinking because a fence means stay out, but do we care if someone walks off hours during, well, I mean, does, it does say unauthorized trespass. So, yeah, I think you're right, Mr. Mayor, we can just say all property.
Do we object to a non-resident walking along the parks?
Yeah, that's what my concern with the word property is that it's it's at the bottom of page four, it's defined very broadly, it's not just buildings and fixtures and furniture and grounds, but also streets, alleys, curves, sidewalks. Um.
Yes, but what I was thinking, they're, I mean, say unauthorized manner or trespass. So if someone's using our sidewalks at night, they're not unauthorized, they're not trespassing.
Yeah, because it's public, it's public. You know, it's the right of way. The same with the parkland, we don't, we don't control.
We don't have hours of operation, so they'd be unauthorized, yeah.
Anyway, my my main, my main point was to treat the tennis courts the same as.
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah, well, I I can throw in some some language there and as the mayor said, this is just introduction, the council could think about it before adoption.
By the way, in terms of the parkland, the one of the one of the motivations behind having a a management plan is hopefully they're going to recommend if we should have signage like parkland closes at dusk. You know, there, no, no, nobody can sleep here, you know, things like that. So that will address, hopefully, those will be questions you can ask once a management plan is proposed for the park.
All right, any other comments on this ordinance? And Ron, do you have clear guidance at this point?
Yeah, I do, thank you. I mean, one day you might want to take a look at I as well. I's always bothered me. It says you're not allowed to climb in trees, which is pretty rough for kids.
Finding a tree.
Uh, that is hard, um.
It's impossible with police, so.
I think it's one we look the other way on, one of the children.
Right.
Growing up on the other hand, you know. All right. Okay, so we'll move on then to, uh, EJ, it's your turn, uh, discussion on test of the standard disclosures regarding town policies and regulations that be annexed to home sales.
Yeah, so I can, I'll begin and then I can hand it over to Councilman Burcana since it was his idea. But just to kind of quickly, uh, re- uh, introduce it is, as was discussed previously, uh, at the last council meeting, is, um, some towns, including the town of Chevy Chase and Tacoma Park, which are in the pack as examples, have disclosures with the, uh, that are used in contracts in those towns to basically ensure that homeowners coming into those communities understand that those communities have their own unique laws that need to be followed. Uh, and so, uh, Councilman Burcana is, has asked us to be added to the work session that we develop our own in association with the Board of Realtors so that when homes are purchased in Somerset, we can be sure that the people coming in have been legally made aware of that Somerset has its own code ordinances.
It it's sale and rental, by the way.
Okay, does it say that?
Sales and rental.
Early, if any comments?
No, I mean, I think, uh, this, actually, this issue has come up in the Public Safety Committee as well, uh, and so I'm going to thank Marwa Swadi for actually triggering this idea many, 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 a couple of years ago. Um, and then I learned that, you know, from 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 a neighbor in in the town of Chevy Chase, they've been doing this. I'd be interested to hear from Ron if there are any, you know, ex- sort of lessons learned or anything from from his work there.
Well, well, before you, before you talk, Ron, can I, I'll give you a little bit of history too. So, so I I used to be the, on the board of the Association G Car. And I also was on the the forums committee. So 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 the board, it's not called the board anymore, it's the Association. So the Association is a standard sales and rental contract, contracts, which probably many of you have seen. And then there are, we're not, this is years ago, but there used to be addendums for Rockville, Gaithersburg, and Tacoma Park. They would have the specific, um, rules and regulations that they wanted to give notice to these renters and purchasers. renters and purchasers about the town. And, and this is such a great idea because it really in many ways will take the place of this welcome letter that's been proposed. Because that, when, when somebody signs their contract and signs their lease, they'll see, they'll be given proper notice on how this is different. And it will also force the Realtor. A lot of times the Realtors, when they like get a rental listing in Somerset, they don't tell the potential renters what all these rules are. You know, in this way, when they sign the lease, they'll be forced to sign the addendum and hopefully read it, although as you know, most people don't read anything, but, but hopefully we can work with the Realtors to ensure that they actually review it.
I think we had at least one resident who, I think at some town council meeting even said that had she known that a particular rule was there, she may not, may, may not have bought the house. I mean, I think it's important as early in the process as possible. That people have this information, not after they buy the house. So anyway, that's, that's all I wanted to add.
That will still not prevent people from making statements.
Yeah, at least they have.
All right, so we, we agreed that we should develop something.
But, but basically it's not, you know, it's, it's not something that would be approved by the, by the town government council. It will be approved by the Association.
Right.
Oh, oh, maybe he, maybe Ron knows. I'm sorry, cause I'm, this is ten years ago. Ron probably knows a lot more.
I, I would, I agree with everything that's been said. I wrote the disclosure on behalf of the town of Chevy Chase, which is here. And then the town manager provided it to G Car for G Car's approval. And, and G Car's adoption.
And, and there was no problem, right?
Yes, I believe that's right, Mr. Mayor.
Cause it, it goes through the same kind of process here. It goes to the forms committee of G Car.
Right.
And then all the Realtors can comment, oh, I don't want this. It's too much, it's too much of a burden. And then it goes to the board. So at the appropriate time, we can take a position with G Car.
So the next step is to ask Ron to prepare draft. Is that what the next step is?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I mean, I just want, I mean, I just would make sure that, you know, I don't want like a whole list of like things you can't do. Then it sounds like you're buying to like an H O A or something, you know, but, but we don't limit people from hanging certain things on their doors or.
Well, I think, I, I think once he develops it, you'll see, it's, it's not, it's only one page.
Yeah, and it's, it's just aimed at the, it's just aimed at the big issues. So in the town of Chevy Chase, similar to what Rohit said. In the town was finding, some people were saying, gosh, I didn't realize I'd need a building permit from the town as well. You had a different side setback.
Right.
And then the signature page says, you know, the buyer's supposed to send a copy of this completed disclosure to the town manager. So when they do seek a permit, we can say, you should have known about our rules. You signed this disclosure.
The same like Airbnb. You know, we don't allow Airbnbs. And the people should know when they're renting or buying that they can't turn into an Airbnb. Cause the Realtors don't, you know, the Realtors work in, in all the jurisdictions around here and they don't necessarily know what's different about. You know, the town of Chevy Chase, Rockville, they don't even know that it's, most of the people don't know that a lot of the Realtors don't even know that it's in Somerset.
They, basically maybe that should be the disclosure statement too. Um, I, there's, there's something else the town of Chevy Chase does that I like, that I wonder if we could do, which is they, they have a simplified version, common language version of town code, uh, basically on their site. Um, and the reason why I'm saying that is that we've got residents who, uh, are not aware of all the rules that, 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 um, we have in town.
That's a good idea.
And so if we do a common language version of our code like town of Chevy Chase has, then that would probably help our residents, uh, and certainly it could be pointed to whenever.
I'm sure the town, I'm sure the town manager would love to write that. The town manager and the town, deputy town manager can write that.
Between them, uh, oh, I, I love giving aside, but that's just beautiful.
The town manager probably got a, took a class in how to do that. Right, see.
Okay, very good. All right. Um, any other comments on this ordinance? Are we?
Not the ordinance, the disclosures.
The disclosures, sorry.
All right, Ron, Ron will draft up something for our next work session. How, how does it work, Ron? What is the, what are the steps from?
Yes, I, I can, yeah, I'll, I'll draft a disclosure for you and and cover what I think are the big issues and you can take a look at it and subtract.
Okay, yeah, I think input from things like, we, cancer or, uh, Brad Beck was talking about would be good. Cause we want it to be user-friendly. You know, we wouldn't want it to be every difference, cause then it'll be page after page. They're not gonna read anybody.
I was talking about the disclosure, but you're asking EJ to do the plain language summary.
It's okay.
Okay.
Let's see, it could be amended.
All right, so, uh, the next thing is something I asked to be on the agenda, which is a discussion on moving reference collection, pause from taxes to a fee system. And in fact, the county has a fee system. That's how they operate themselves and so there's no particular standard for putting it in property taxes. Um, why it makes sense is that what you throw out is kind of, is personal. It's not, um, public harm or public good. It is, it is something that you choose yourself how much to put in the trash versus reuse, recycle or whatever. Um, and having a fee kind of signals that, that it is your responsibility under those circumstances. That's its value in doing it.
By the way, uh, let me point out that, um, the council president is the Maryland Municipal League Montgomery Chapters rep on the county's very important Solid Waste Advisory Committee. So he has lots and lots of knowledge about this. And so I'm glad that he wanted to put this on the agenda to begin discussion, but I, I think before the council would, would even begin to take action on it, they need to provide a lot of information. Cause it's a really complex, and, and it's related to being good environmental stewards, right? Isn't that right?
It is. I mean, wh- once you've got a fee system in place, you can then begin to introduce something called unit-based pricing or, um, save as you go, as our county executive likes to call it. Which means that you can actually save money by, um, putting out less trash.
Right.
Um, so.
It's very state of the art and it's the way it's gonna go in this country eventually. And it would be great if we took the lead. Don't you agree?
Right, well, I mean, the county is already beginning to move in that direction, but we certainly have municipality could take the lead that way. Anyway, it's, it's something to be thought about is what I'm saying and.
Well, how far is the county along?
Uh, they're introducing pilots, um, in a couple of neighborhoods in this year or next year.
I just get people to pay.
Uh, what, well, if, okay, if you want more detail, I'll give you more detail. Um, you actually work with the grocery stores. Um, and you buy your bags at grocery store. They're different colors with, um, bigger bags, you know, one color, smaller bags, another color, medium bags, yet another color. Um, and that's how you pay.
I go and I buy my bags and it goes to the curb. We're not collecting it, you know, we're not.
Oh, yeah, well, I, I mean, you put it in your bin still the same way you're putting it.
So, so I haven't really, I just had a brainstorm. I think we should have a, um, public information session sometime this summer on this and have experts come and talk about it to get the community to understand it better and then they'll support.
I know at least one expert who can.
Yeah. I think that'd be a really good idea.
I mean, it would be good for the council to understand it first steps because I think, uh, you know, one, two people produce more trash than one person. So this could in a way be punitive to families versus retirees and you know, I wouldn't want any policy that somehow penalizes. Because if you were.
That's a good question to ask the expert.
One or two people, if you're a three member family, you buy more trash bags. Because you will just mathematically produce more trash. So it just cre- it could create that. It's a question I've had. We've talked about this before.
First of all, a couple of things, it, it's, some of our, um, most financially stressed individuals in town are single people living alone. And this will give them a real cost saving.
It's a ve- it's a very good question.
Wait, so is this a policy to give cost savings to people living alone?
It, it's a policy to give cost savings to everybody.
Anybody.
To throw out some numbers, um, the average reduction in trash um, is around forty-five percent when this, so therefore that's a reduction in, in costs to, to everybody, including families, including. Uh, in the back, well, recycling, I mean, the only thing that you're charged for is landfill trash, which is your, um, the, you're one of your bins, not your recycling bin, not your food scrap bin. So that, that's all you're charged for.
I only bring that up to say it would be good for us to have a discussion and understand this.
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
I wouldn't want to alarm the town by having a public information campaign that they're.
We're not, we, it's, that's not what it would be. That's not what it would be.
Do you have anything that you've read that would, that would be easy to understand that you could circulate?
I can certainly circulate a PowerPoint slightly if I can find it.
It's, it's not read, it's not read. He just wanted to put it on the agenda to begin the discussion.
And certainly if you're interested, I can, I can contact an expert.
Could we do that at a, at a, at a future web session, have somebody come?
Well, 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 thank you. We'll, we'll, we'll work on that.
By the way, the, uh, county fees are gonna go up next year. I don't yet know quite how much they're gonna go up, but that will we pay some of those fees, so we'll see our fees rise next year. All right, um, it is EJ this time, all right.
Yes, thank you.
Public safety update for the town manager.
Yes, thank you. So I'll quickly go over the highlights and then take any questions if there are any. Um, last month in April, six, six sections of sidewalk were replaced. This was talked about uh, before it was done at the last work session. Um, an additional seven spots are going to be replaced, uh, very soon. I'm currently scheduling the exact date. Uh, there's, the, uh, in the report is the addresses, the reason for replacement and then the dashman's pictures. Um, and then those speed radar signs are up and working. Pictures of those, uh, in the next work session, I plan to have a report of their, uh, initial findings, both when they were collecting data off and then now when they're collecting data and on. If you come to the post and it's open, you may notice a new post sign on the bridge.
I was missing.
That's a great sign. People were really complimentary of it at the swim team, um, event on Friday.
You could see it from halfway up.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yeah, so, and I'm hoping that, uh, and I'm working so that major bridge work can occur with full season soon and at, at the last work session, the council decided, or last council meeting, the council decided to have, um, I studied on the intersections of Dorset, Devon, Combe and Warwick. And so that's, uh, study has been commissioned. Um, I have some of the kind of details of it here. And so the study will occur before school is let out and then I want to say it's complete, a presentation we made to the council and then the council can move forward with whatever, uh, council decides. Um, and then.
Who's doing the study?
A group called the Traffic Group, um, that was recommended to me by the Village of Morning additions on the Chevy Chase. They, the council's used them before.
All right.
Um.
So the traffic group?
Yeah. And then there's a somewhat factual error in the report, just because I wrote this last week, is Dewberry has submitted deliverable passport number one. It says in the report that there will be meeting with Dewberry Public Safety Committee next week. It's that we're meeting with this week. That was just because, um, I wrote this last week and then other that, it'll also be presented to the council. And then, um, I received feedback on the contract with the bar for um, vision scaling consulting, uh, consulting. So I'll be incorporating that and I've imported that. So that's my public safety update. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, uh, so comments on any of those elements, um, sort of that all, uh, so are we happy with the idea that the traffic book is now going to study the intersections that we've been concerned about, uh, Dorset, Devon and Combe and Warwick? Um, that.
Yeah, um, I think, well, first of all, I think, uh, I think it's fantastic to have this report. It'd be great to have it monthly. Um, I think this is, it's really great, um. Um, I think just a, just a few general, general, uh, one, one general comment. I think that it, it would be good to have, uh, sort of timelines and schedule dates nailed down to the, to the extent that's possible. So you know, when, you know, when will these additional seven spots be done? Um, how long you expect the radar signs to be at particular locations, the data collection, is it gonna be thirty days, sixty days and so on? Um, so just, you know, for each one, it would be just good to have some sort of timeline and I presume you have maybe some sort of project management system that allows you to monitor that. Um, I think that, uh, on this on this question of the speed radar signs, um, we are just sharing with others, uh, uh, so I, I spent a little bit of time looking at both, the last, you know, last week, um, at six o'clock hour. Um, and I think that, you know, the one, uh, coming towards here, uh, towards the school does capture useful data. I think the one going towards Little Falls Parkway is, is I, as I, as both I have mentioned and and Kumar Waswani, I think is, is too close to the intersection, so almost zero, I mean, out of, but more than a dozen vehicles, only one person actually got anywhere near.
Also just after a speed bump, so I mean.
You have the Surrey, you have the Surrey, uh, Cumberland intersection and then you were going to Little Falls Parkway and the speed bump comes so soon that nobody has hit, uh, even fifteen, seventeen miles an hour, let alone twenty. So I think that once you've got the data for that, that one should definitely be moved down because we do want to collect data for the downhill on Cumberland. And it just needs to be moved and there's at least, uh, a suggestion I, I shared with you, where it could be moved down, a little bit further down the hill halfway between the the, the two speed bumps. Um, on, on the, um, the, on topic four. So I, I mean, I understand what, what, uh, is being proposed for the two intersections. Um, it would be useful just to know what you have asked, what questions you've asked of the traffic group regarding the straightaways. Um, what is, what is the issue, what are the issues here that they're being asked to look at? Um, and the last point I wanted to make is, um, could you give us an update as to precisely what is going on regarding movement of vegetation at those two properties? Because here we have a situation, we have a, we have a safety hazard for the town. We are, we are going to be spending money for the traffic group to give us some recommendations. It presumably costs us money to implement those recommendations. All because two homeowners won't trim back their vegetation in the town's right of way. So in other words, all of us, all residents are bearing the cost of improving the safety because there's vegetation that is on the town's right of way. And I think before we start getting down this rather bizarre path where the town bears the cost of remediating something that individual homeowners should be responsible for. So I would, you know, but really before we go down this path of spending more money with the traffic group, I would like to understand where are we? You know, I think more than, almost three weeks have passed since the deadline for them to comply. As far as I, as of last night, nothing had been done in those two intersections.
Okay, so let's, let's ask the town attorney what he advises, because I think at this point, we should turn it over to the town attorney. So what did you, what do you, what do you advise, sir? You're muted.
Sorry. Yeah, typical approach is to send warnings. If warnings don't work, you know, then you can, they can send a notice of violation. And if they notify isolation doesn't result in abatement, you can issue fines. And, you know, if, if that doesn't work. And, you know, if, if that doesn't work, some jurisdictions have authority to do a clean and lean. That's when you go in and do the, the cutting back yourself, and then add the cost to the owner's tax bill. Don't know off the top of my head if the town of Somerset has a clean and lean process. I don't believe so, but I'll look right now.
We have, we have a overgrown vegetation policy.
I, I would like to recommend that the um, town council bless the idea that we turn this over to the town attorney, because our residents, I, I believe based on my experience here, that the violators will be more responsive to a letter from the town attorney. So I, I would, and this is really up to, you know, us, but I, I would like this to be blessed by all of you.
I agree. I think, Ron, we have, we have, we have the council adopted a, a, an overgrown vegetation policy.
Yeah.
I believe it outlines the steps that the town government can take.
Right.
We should, we should now move on past stage one.
I, I, I think that we should, I think we should do that. So does everybody bless that?
Well.
Can I ask a question? Um, do we, did you guys provide for those residents, I don't know if we've ever even spoken with them, but like exactly what to remove?
Yes.
And is it that all the azaleas?
It's, we told them, I don't know if it's all azaleas, but all the ones that basically lean over into the alley.
They, they, they don't, they don't respect.
It should be like a clean cut, basically.
Yeah, they don't respect.
And do we have a letter or something from a traffic engineer stating, here's an obstruction, and here's the necessary abatement? That would certainly help me.
That's what uh, this is uh, the, not this, but um, that traffic engineer thing, we do not have currently. That's part of what this is, this is uh, what it is.
And I think, I think it's helpful to have a traffic engineer's assessment. Uh, Ron, there, we, we, we don't need a traffic and, to pay a traffic engineer to tell us that you cannot see.
Right.
The town's sign.
I, I don't, I agree.
Okay.
I, I don't think this is something that we need to go overboard debate and discuss, because the violation has been identified, and I think we should turn it over to the town attorney.
First to clarify, did we communicate in writing or in person?
Uh, in writing.
Okay, so we have the paper.
We have record, yeah.
Yeah, and how many times have we communicated? How far back did it come?
I think it started with predecessor.
It's been, it's, it is, it, okay, so this really isn't.
We gave this season.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Recently.
Okay, this, this is not really, okay. Okay, I think we need to uh, adjourn so we can swear in Councilmember Ravak, because we, we met our.
I, I just have one, one quick thing. I would love to do that as well, but the Dewberry report, would it be possible to circulate?
Yep.
Uh, to the council, yes, it's possible. Thank you, thank you. And then the broken sidewalk by five four one five trans.
Yep.
Our house, I just want to call that out to do it's been three months.
WSSC.
But it would be, I just, you know, my wife observes that a couple of people have trucked.
Okay.
So I just want to.
Your side.
Yeah, so just, I have no idea.
Okay, well, that, that needs to get right away. I'll reach out to our liaison with WSSC and see if we can get that.
I just don't want people to come.
And, and before we adjourn, I also want to say that, as you'll see even on your pictures, um, there are places in town where the sidewalks are much higher than the um, area grass beyond sidewalk. You need to do something about that eventually.
Hopefully that's in Dewberry's report, that's more than.
Exactly.
So we're all looking forward to.
All right. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Move your turn.
No, we, Councilmember Ravak.
Well, we have to go back to special counsel.
We have to swear you in. No, it doesn't have to be at a meeting.
Oh, okay, all right.
We can, right, Mr. Towns, we, we can.
That's right, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ravak, we need to swear you in. We need to swear you in. Raise your right hand.
You're a senior.
After me.
Yeah.
No, you're a senior. I. State your name.
Uh, Shannon Robin.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Somerset Town Councilmember.
Execute the office of the Somerset Town Councilmember.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Speak, speak, speak.
Please sign this. Thanks, everybody. Excellent meeting. You asked some fantastic questions.